All right, if all our candidates are ready, we'll go ahead and get started. And just a quick note for all of you, when you do go ahead to talk, just pull the microphone closer to you so we make sure everyone can hear you. So first off, good evening, everyone. My name is Delaney Nato. I'm a senior on the Oyster River High School Student Senate. And on behalf of my fellow senators, I'd like to thank you all for coming to the School Board Candidate Forum. We'd like to welcome all of our candidates here tonight. From Durham, we have Stephanie Pitts, Kelly Ikies, John Colwell, and Jason Colleagues is also running from Durham. However, he's unfortunately unable to be here this evening. And then from Lee, we have Brian Sisneros and Renee Bennett. So throughout the forum, we will have our candidates address some questions created by our student senators. And once they've all had the opportunity to address those student-created questions, we will open it up to questions from all of you, our audience. And before we get to those questions, we will have all of our candidates introduce themselves. So if you want to start, Stephanie?
Hello, everyone. My name is Stephanie Pitts. I've lived in Durham for just over five years now, retired military, lived all over the US, finally settled down here. I have three children. My oldest will be starting high school next year. The other two are in the school district. I'm a certified safety professional. That's my profession by trade. That's all I got. Anything specific?
Hello, I'm Kelly Ikies, and I am in Durham, as Delaney said. I moved to the Oyster River School District specifically because of the district. We've been here about seven years now. I have a high school freshman and a third grader at MoHerramitt. And one of the biggest things that I love is the programs, opportunities, and support that we provide to our students. So that's really kind of what drew us here. And that's me.
Hello, everybody. I'm John Colwell from Durham. We moved here in 2020. My wife and two daughters are up in the back there hiding, Ayla and Eliana. Ayla is a second grader in MoHerramitt right now. We moved here also largely around the school district. My wife's also a professor at UNH. I myself am a chemical engineer for a battery startup and am responsible for the process engineering group there. We are very excited to be here and thank you for the time.
I'm Brian Sisneros from Lee. I've lived in the district since 2003, so about 21 years. My daughter graduated from Oyster River High School a couple of years ago. My son is currently a freshman here at the high school. I am a business administrator for the Conville School District out in Peterborough, which is a district about similar size to here, but it's a little bit geographically spread out. It's about 250 square miles, 11 schools, about 2,000 kids. So and again, I moved here when my daughter was five months old because of the school district. And I've been happy with it ever since and probably will continue to live here for many years to come.
Good evening. Yep. Good evening. My name is Renee Bennett. I am a mother of six. I have two students that have graduated from Oyster River High School, benefited from the education. I have three students in the elementary school and a little son that will enter kindergarten in a couple of years. I also moved here for the school district. Professionally, I'm an Assistant Superintendent for SAU 16 in charge of student services and superintendent designated for one of our districts. We have seven school districts in SAU 16. I'm also an independent consultant that supports schools and provides PD on trauma-informed care and social-emotional learning for students, as well as trauma-informed leadership and how to support your staff around their own secondary traumatic stress. So those are really my areas of expertise, and I'm excited to be here tonight.
Perfect. So our first question from our senators is, what got you interested in this position?
Hello again. As I just mentioned, I have three students in the school district and wanting to make sure that they, as well as all the other children in the school district, are provided with the best education available and possible, with the best resources available.
So for me, we volunteer, my husband Eric and I volunteer for lots of different school activities, everything from the MoHerramitt pumpkin stroll to building sets for the middle school drama program and coming up with the high school spring musical in just a day or so that we're going to start set-building. And the school district provides lots of different opportunities for us to be involved. I had the opportunity to sit on the superintendent search committee as a parent and community member. And that really gave me a great insight into different ways that I could contribute to the school district and help to shape policy and inform programs. So the school board opportunity that opened up was definitely an interest for me to kind of further get in and get to be a part of the school district more.
So for me, it was really around an opportunity to learn and get more involved in the community. We moved here in 2020, in the middle of COVID, and we have moved around. I think we had 11 houses or lived in 11 places in 13 years prior to moving here, four years ago. And now we're planning on being here through the entirety of the girls going through high school, hopefully, and hopefully UNH after that, if we can work it. So planning to be a part of the community for a very long time. We are, I want to learn more about what we have here. So far, we've been very happy with MoHerramitt and the school system. So that was what got me interested in trying to start running.
It's kind of interesting why I'm interested in this position because I'm already in the position. I've been there, I've been served on the board for seven years. That's an odd number because I actually was appointed by the select board in Lee due to a resignation at the time. So the select board appointed me to the board and I ran two more times. So this is actually the third time I'm running. I've been able to do a lot in my seven years here. First year or two was kind of learning, but since then, I actually spearheaded one of the groups that got the middle school vote out there. I went around doing personal meetings with people to show the value of why we should spend $50 million on a new building with no building aid whatsoever. And apparently that was successful. We got a 76% vote on that. I've also been part on, as you can see, if you, I'm sure you're driven by it, it's a beautiful building. If you haven't been inside, please go in and check it out. It is unbelievable. It's also one of the first, and I was part of the building and design committee. So I was there when the first pencil hit the graph paper or designed that school and went all the way through to actually pass the opening to finish up. So I was able to decide and determine where and why rooms are put where they were, where everything else was. It was really, really rewarding, and I loved being part of that. The other thing is I was on the, the things I've done is mostly I headed the budget committee. So anytime we have a budget here, I'm one of the ones that actually helps craft it with the business administrator and the superintendent and two other members of the board who were on that committee. That can be quite challenging, although it's what I do normally in my normal course of business. That's what I do in a business administrator in another school district. So being part of that, and even though as a board member, you're not teaching, the real valuable part is when you go to that graduation at the end of the year and you see these kids graduate and you realize that you actually had a part in it, even though you didn't teach them, you got them the tools they needed to be successful. And when you see them go out and be real productive members of society, it's great. And that's why being part of this board is important because we have to make a lot of decisions and craft a lot of things to make sure that's able to happen and protect taxpayers in the same token. So that's one of the things that makes me interested. And obviously, hiring a new superintendent has always been an opportunity that most people don't get. And I was able to be on that screening committee with a couple of the board members and Kelly this year to do that. And I think we made a pretty good decision, and we'll be welcoming a new superintendent on July 1st of this year.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank Brian for his service because he has been really pro schools, and I think that's a great thing. The reason why I decided to run, I have an invested interest as a parent on supporting the Oyster River School District moving forward, and it continues its great work. I also have spent 25 years as a public educator. I started off as a para and a special educator. And I know how hard it is for those teachers in the schools and administrators to do the work that they're doing. And it continues to get a little bit more difficult when there are messages that aren't always pro-public school. So I really wanted to get involved in my community and the school board to support the Oyster River School District because it is a game changer for students and it provides a lot of incredible levels of equity for students. And so we need to continue to support our public schools. So I felt like I could contribute a lot as a superintendent. I work with school boards. I know their role. I know how important it is to have them on the side of the school and providing the resources and the supervision of the superintendent that moves in the right direction. So I wanted to give, I wanted to give it a shot and support our local schools because I think it is so incredibly important.
So next off, what experience and strengths do you bring to this position?
I did 20 years in the military, so there's a lot of fun experience from that, just being a leader for all types of different people around the world. And then my current job is a safety manager for a company in Boston. You may not equate it, but I find safety in everything we do. So developing policies, developing training, I've done all that. And I know as a school board member, we won't necessarily be doing that ourselves. But I've had experience with those kinds of things and understand the work that goes into it. I have absolutely no educational, I'll be honest with you, I don't have any educational, specific schooling other than just being a parent and being in the military and being a leader.
So I've worked in the education area for over 20 years at this point. I'm a former special education teacher. I've worked with individuals with disabilities at both the school settings and residential settings as well. Most recently, I've been in the educational assessment world for a long time. I've worked with many different departments of education all across the United States. And I understand the importance of policy and how that plays with implementing programs, as well as, you know, budgetary and fiscal aspects as well. They're all woven together and have to each be considered, how each, you know, affects the other one. And importantly, I think for me, one of my most, you know, greatest strengths is this multifaceted perspective that I have as a parent of a child who had an IEP. She went through the PEP program, which we adored, and then is now, you know, at the elementary level. And then my high schooler went through the middle school, through the MoHerramitt to the middle school and now in her beginning career at high school. So that certainly is an important strength as well. And then having that perspective as a parent, a Durham taxpayer, and that kind of foundational educator background as well.
So I also don't have any formal educational experience in terms of having worked within a school or a teacher. So I would lean pretty heavily on, a long time ago when I was a student, so growing up in the public school systems in Rhode Island, up around a couple of different schools there, going through, you know, the whole process of losing all your friends, going through, as you change schools, being on the receiving side of getting into the band and the chess club and being a bit on the outside of the social circles. I had experiences with my parents getting divorced, my mother died all through high school. So that experienced, I leaned heavily on what I experienced there and how that would translate to what I can remember from that timeframe, granted it was a while ago. Then also went into a university, University of Rhode Island. I went where I could afford to go. I got a scholarship there, so that was then being the choice. Got two bachelor's degrees while there, did a five-year program in six years. So that whole experience of making it through school, not always being the best student, but taking that experience and translating into a productive work career so far. I manage 20 people now and had a variety of companies. I've never been the subject matter expert in any of them. I always have had to learn on the job as I go, communicate and listen to people and understand what their positions are and, you know, make the best decisions I could within those groups as I progressed through my career. And now in the teaching mode, I do have the children. They teach me a lot as I teach them. So that is my experience and strengths that I think I would bring to this position.
I hold an MBA in finance, and I also have a certificate of education finance from Georgetown University. I've been, like I said, a business administrator for several years, who are, currently I manage a budget of almost $60 million. But I work daily, hand-in-hand with administrators in the district and teachers to some level because, believe it or not, everything that a district does is financial in some way. And we are stewards of taxpayer money, and that can be very daunting for certain people. But when you realize that you're managing $60 million of hard-earned money from your taxpayers, it's, you kind of take a little bit of a different approach to it. But I also utilize my skills to teach. I'm an adjunct college professor, or I teach business finance. I've taught, geez, risk management. I've taught business administration, a few other ones. But I'm, right now, I'm sticking strictly with business finance, giving back a little bit. I've served on the board of one of our large health insurance risk pools for the state, school care. I've also served on the board of the New Hampshire Association of School Business Officials. So pretty much every aspect of my life is education to some level. But I can't escape it. I go to two board meetings every two weeks, which is, it's good and it's bad. You get to kind of see the inner workings of a district, but I have a keen understanding of how a district works on a day-to-day level. And not that you get involved in that as a board member, but you need to understand how your decisions affect other people in your district. Because what you may see as, oh, it's just, that's just a small change, but it may affect six, seven, eight, 20 people at the same time. And you have to, and you also have to understand how it affects the children as well. And that's where, you know, my strength is, working on the board for seven years, being able to work with different personalities and different people, not only at my regular job, but here on the board. It's, you know, it's a challenge, but we make it work. And we make it work because ultimately it's about the kids. We want to make sure that everything we do is geared towards their success. Every decision you make, every dollar you spend has to be geared towards a child's success. And that's why I want to continue on the board and continue to do that because I think we're on a really good path right now, and I'd like to continue to do that. And we have some challenges coming up as far as strategic planning, a new superintendent. We have a new teacher's contract that will be coming out. A lot of challenges that I know, when I bring to the table, I negotiate contracts on a regular basis. So I'd like to be part of that as well.
I have my doctorate in educational leadership. My dissertation was focused on social-emotional learning and mental health needs for students and staff. I have, a unique perspective is that I've been on the other side, working with school boards. I've written and proposed policy for the school boards to approve on the policy committee. I've also negotiated, in my district, we call it collective bargaining agreement, but it's the same thing as the teacher guild in Oyster River, where I've negotiated three, four-year contracts with the teachers. I've also needed to develop and propose school board, propose budgets for the school board to review. So the lens I bring is I really know what questions to ask and what to, and how to facilitate those conversations. I also have experience cheerleading for schools in public. So I can really understand a parental's perspective and questions, but I also can help share reasons in why a school district or a school board would approve certain initiatives or policies or why we're promoting something else. I think something else unique and a lens I would have on the school board when working with the superintendent and his leadership team and teachers is my background in students' mental health and staff's mental health. Because it is on the rise, and I know it's a priority for Oyster River. I've seen the school board meetings and concerned about students' mental health on the rise and how do we address it in school. I'm in charge of the MTSSB for my school district, which is all about the preventative science and how do we support students' social-emotional learning and growing. So that's a lens I would bring when working with the superintendent and the leadership team around their initiatives on how they're going to be proactive and address our students' needs. Thank you.
All right. So in your role as a school board member, what would you be looking to change and what would you be looking to keep the same?
I'll be honest, I'm one of those people who, when I come into a position, I don't go in thinking we have to change everything right away. I like to get to know the system, whatever it is, in this case, the school district, and learn about it and then see what needs to change. So I don't really have a lot of any notes to add right here, being brutally honest. I will say, not necessarily want to change for the good or better. I just say I'm very into LGBTQIA rights, so making sure that they are seen in any other minority group. Just making sure that they're seen and that they have any kind of support that they need.
So there are a lot of wonderful things about our school district. We're super progressive in our values of student choice and engagement and individualized learning. So that's something that I do definitely want to support and continue to encourage and grow. In thinking about the, my priorities in coming in, certainly, as Renee talked about, supporting the mental health new programming and encouraging new avenues and opportunities here. This is certainly something that the school district has shared, has been a very big concern with, you know, increased referrals for students. And it's something that, you know, we've directly experienced in our lives. So that is definitely an area where there's some change that's needed, but it's still very much in line with what the district is, you know, has for values. So it's a, it's a good change in that way. Certainly, I think there's great opportunities to continue to incorporate and expand our connections with UNH. It's very, you know, mutually beneficial. It's right here. It's, you know, there are not many districts that have that ability and opportunity to have that partnership. So that's certainly an area that is important for me. And then it's funny, I think Renee and I are very much along the similar lines, making sure that the MTSS, the multi-tiered system of supports and universal design for learning guidelines and programs are implemented and ingrained in what teachers are doing every day, that it just becomes natural. And that's something that the district has started work in this area, and it's working very, very well. And it's something that can continue to be expanded and encouraged. The last piece that I think is going to be a key activity for the board collectively is certainly making sure that we are supporting the onboarding of Dr. Shapps as the new superintendent. He's coming into a very well-informed and supportive, community-based school district. So making sure that he understands that and giving him the best opportunity to share what he knows and to bring new things. As a school board, we want to be able to listen to his new ideas and see if there are ways that we can help implement in the new aspects of what he brings to us.
So I'm along the similar lines of Stephanie in that this is the, sort of the first round for me. I'm looking certainly to learn what things need to be prioritized for the first two years, three years of Ayla's experience so far at MoHerramitt. I'm extremely happy with the programs there, really appreciate the triggering program, the outdoor activities that they have, motime and all the rest of the interactive activities they have, library time, everything like that. It seems like a really good balance between sort of free learning, the ability to actual learn. Everything is improving greatly. So in terms of the, you know, very happy with the school district so far. So I just want to learn more about the details, as Brian describes, about how everything works and what things need to be adjusted from that standpoint. So I'd be very interested in learning a lot as I come into it, listening to what people have to say, what they've perceived changes need to be from the community, whether it be from the town community itself, the student community, all the variety of stakeholders that are involved there. Certainly seeing from between the PTO survey and other surveys that have come out, the questions that are listed here. There's concerns around LGBTQIA rights, the community, that need to be heard and properly addressed. And the hate speech type of conversation as well that has come out through these surveys. So both of those, thank you, will need to, are two areas that I look forward to learning more about and seeing what can be done.
Things I'd like to change or keep the same, I will say that the school board actually operates very efficiently. And what I mean by that is we have certain committees that we utilize. We utilize committees the way they're designed, which is to basically, for example, I run the finance committee, finance and budget committee. So we handle a budget season. We kind of get through, wade through all the mud that people have to go through, all the quicksand and all that stuff, and get to the meat and potatoes and bring choices to the board so they can understand, you know, where we are in the budget, what we need to do, what do you look, and then say where we're at. Because you need to decide, are you going to add positions that are requested? Or are you going to cut the budget? Are you going to, you know, move funds around? Are we going to use capital reserve funds? Are we going to use grant funds? How is it going to work? And so what that ends up doing is saving a lot of time at the regular board meetings. Because what used to happen is we'd spend five, six hours at a board meeting, two hours of the night, trying to decide on a budget, when we can get through it all, operate a little more efficiently, and now discuss it for maybe half an hour to an hour and get through it. The same thing with our policy committee, it works very, very efficiently. Where policies are brought in on a regular basis, not just to be reviewed, I mean, a lot of them is to be reviewed, but to maybe be updated because laws have changed or our needs have changed or the procedures changed. We have a sustainability committee where we're fully, our sustainability committee, our member on the sustainability committee is directly involved with the people on the front lines. So it's very, very efficient in reporting back to us on what's happening within the district. So that efficiency actually works pretty well because we can get a lot done in a short period of time. Because as a board member, all your deliberations have to be in public. You cannot do anything behind the scenes. So you really do have a limited, you literally have about four hours a month, two hours each meeting, twice a month, to actually do business. Which, if you think about it, you're probably at home, you're probably doing at least four hours at home, doing your own business, whether it's dealing with issues at home, paying your bills or anything like that. You know, we have to do that a little more efficiently. So one thing I enjoy about this board is how efficient it is and how well it works and how open we are to new ideas when it comes to, you know, either educational curriculum, whether it's a new counselor position, like we put in the budget this year, I'll use that as an example. We had to prioritize what we wanted this year, what we needed. And there was a lot of positions that wanted to be, people wanted to put in the budget. But as we got through the whole process, we were able to get, we were able to actually narrow it down to what can we afford? And how can we, how can we pay for it without hurting the taxpayer? We ended up putting in a strings teacher. We ended up putting in a mental health counselor. And those two things were very high on our priority list. It was very high on the priority list of the administrators. Those two things directly affect students, especially with the mental health issues that are going on since COVID. So it's a very efficient process that really needs to continue in that respect. I don't have a lot that I would change with the board because I do think it operates very efficiently. You know, there's always minor things and tweaks. Everyone always brings something to the table. Any new people that come to the board always brings a skill set that we might not have had before. And so you have to be able to notice that and utilize that, and so we can operate at peak efficiency.
The question is, what would we change or what would we enhance or keep?
What would you change or what would you keep the same? Yeah.
I don't think it's fair for me to list things that I would change yet because once you become on a board, you get access to more information. You really get to have those in-depth conversations with your superintendent. I decided to run because I liked the direction that the Oyster River School District is headed in, and Jim is on his way out, and there's a new superintendent coming in. And I wanted to be a member of the community that worked to support the current direction and that if there's areas that we can just really enhance. And again, I'll go back to the mental health piece and the MTSSB and policy work to support students. That is why I decided to run. So I don't have a list of things I would change. I like the direction Oyster River is going in, and I just want to support the work and have it continue.
All right, next off, and some of you have hit this, so feel free to keep it brief if you feel like you've already talked enough about it. But what topics or issues are you passionate about when it comes to education?
For me, as I mentioned before, I'm very invested in LGBTQIA issues. I have, two of my children are in the LGBTQIA spectrum. Don't want to get into politics, but I want to keep the school focused on education in, that's rooted in scientific study and stuff and keep all the other stuff out. So that's kind of what's important to me is getting not, and I'm pretty sure the school district does a great job of it right now, so keep in that direction, but just not trying to get distracted by what's going on in the world and not having it come into the school.
So in terms of my passions related to education is making sure that we're promoting, welcoming and accepting everyone as individuals. Certainly relates a lot to the marginalized communities. And Oyster River is, it's an amazing amalgam of of individuals. So making sure that we're enhancing that is is important in in my my passion. The other piece too is that, you know, every student is different and making sure that we're helping our students to pursue their passions, not just academically. We have a lot of students that have other interests, be it, you know, art or music or different, you know, sport activities, things like that. So finding ways to to help them is an important piece for me. And just being careful of the shiny new thing out there. Just being very, very thoughtful in analyzing it, evaluating its validity and its value is an important piece of making sure that we're continuing in the right direction.
So I think everybody here is at some point mentioned they moved here, basically keeping the school district in mind, so public school systems. I think just the fact that it is a public school system is a big force to me, making sure that's available to everybody who wants to go to the public school system and has access to it and that is inclusive environment for everybody to be at. One thing I've been valuing a lot so far is the nature base and the outdoor experiences that are being given to the kids, at least at the elementary school so far. And I guess I don't know that much about the middle school and high school programs yet. And, you know, one area of, I wouldn't say passion for me, but of importance anyway, being out in the industry now is an understanding that the trades are also valuable. Maybe it's blasphemy in a university town, but not. My brother, for example, didn't end up going to college. He's doing very well for himself. He's very happy in his environment and his work experience. An extremely valuable experience as well to to have the opportunity to sort of transition into the trades if college is not the right thing for people. So having that as a route for people, I think, would be important to include. And I guess the last one is where, you know, my household anyway is a screen minimal household in in many ways. So understanding, one thing that I do want to learn about the the environment, the school policies and the way that we operate is what's the screen and non-screen usage imbalance with, balance within the classrooms. I think it is important. Screens are obviously critical to technology and all that, to our daily lives and to the work experience. But there's also a lot of value in the focus of not using them in every situation.
I'd say there's a couple of issues that I, that I feel I'm passionate about. One of them is food insecurity. People always look at Oyster River and and they say, well, we're a wealthy community. You know, we don't have food insecurity here, but we do. We have a lot of it. We have homeless students. We have students that struggle every day, that are coming from situations that most of us couldn't imagine. And the teachers do a phenomenal job here of noticing when a student is having a challenging day and being able to deal with it. And we have, we have processes put in place in order to make sure that student can still spend a day in a mainstream education, working with other kids and interacting with them. That's always been a passion of mine. I've come from other districts that are much, not wealthy at all and had to deal with that on a regular basis. Here, just because you don't see it on Main Street doesn't mean it doesn't exist. Certain towns you can go to and you can see it on Main Street. But we do have food insecurity. We have, you know, kids that the only meals they're getting are the ones here at school. And that's why 68 Hours of Hunger is a very popular program here. If you speak to anyone who does it or is involved in it, they actually give out a lot of meals every weekend to make sure these kids get fed. That program is one of the, probably one of the best programs the state has ever had. But it's one thing that you can never, you know, everyone always wants to see all the good sides, but you have, can't forget about the bad sides, the rough stuff that it happens. You know, there's a lot of challenges out there that people don't seem to think of every day. The other part I'm I'm passionate about, and it's not as much on the educational side, but it's the school funding issue with the state. As I've mentioned, I I work for the Conville School District. And if anybody's watched the news in the last couple of years, you know that my district is the one that sued the state and won on the school funding issue. And it's in the appeal process now. I don't think it's going to be, probably be a couple of years before we get some resolution, unless legislature actually does what they're supposed to do and fund schools properly. But, you know, what the state is putting onto the taxpayers back in order to fund an adequate education is totally, it's just, it's out of whack. It's for lack of a better term. One thing I'm very, one thing, because I deal with it every day, is the adequacy formula and how we figure it out. I also work on a cooperative school district who uses the exact same formula they use here. So I know how everything affects everybody else, how evaluations, how evaluations and population and ADMs and everything gets figured into the mix. But I like to actually share that with people because I think you need to understand how schools are funded today. And if you did analysis like I did, when I go back so many years and look at all my tax bills and you see what's shifting from, for that school side, even though it's the biggest part, what is shifting from what used to be a smaller percentage to a much larger percentage is put upon the taxpayer? At some point, and one thing I've always studied and I and I preach to other people is there's only so much task capacity in a in a district. There's only so much you can you can charge the taxpayer before they say no more. And I think we're, I think most places in the state are getting to that point. And I think Oyster River is too. And I think we need to really look at the school funding issues to make sure that we are being fairly treated and fairly funded because money doesn't grow on trees. I fully respect the fact that every dollar you get is hard-earned and it needs to be spent properly. We do our best to spend it the most efficient way possible, but we only get so much from the state and they keep changing the formula. So those are the two things I'm passionate about. I went a little long on it, but those are the two things that are probably most important. There's a lot of things that are important to me, but those are the two things at the top of the list.
Besides echoing what Brian said, because I think it's, needs to be highlighted. If you haven't looked into the school funding crisis in New Hampshire, you can Google it and look into it because it is something that's going to face us very soon. But besides that, a passion I didn't share besides the mental health and the support of our teachers and our students is the DEIJ component, diversity, equity and inclusion. My husband and I adopted beautiful children that are biracial and to see the world through their lens was really eye-opening for us. And so I really want to make sure that we promote inclusion, which I did for 25 years as a special educator, but also the celebration of diversity. Diversity can come in a lot of different ways. There's neurodiversity, there's ethnic diversity, there's religious diversities, there's sexual orientation. So I think another passion would be to really support Rachel and Rachel's work as our DEIJ coordinator on top of the mental health and the inclusion practices for students, for all our students.
Awesome answers. So how will you prioritize communication and cooperation in your role as a school board member?
I think communication is pretty much the number one issue behind anything working properly. I am a fan of social media to a point. I'm on the Facebook groups for Oyster River and the individual schools. It's a great way to communicate, to figure out what's going on in the school district, in the city. I follow the cities page as well. Except I'm kind of new to this, so I don't know currently what's out there. But I just am overall in favor of social media and communication is always. Anytime we had any kind of drill or anything going on, it always came down to what can we improve? Communication. So there's always, even if we have what seems like a great system now, there's always ways to potentially improve it. So to look into any means that might help improve communication.
Absolutely agree with Stephanie. And one of the things I think in terms of prioritizing communication and and cooperation is keeping in mind that the the board and district administration and school administration and teachers and and staff are a team. Like we all have to function as a team and disagreement is okay. As long as it's healthy disagreement, we're having conversations. So making sure that we're supporting each other and continuing to to keep those those lines of communication open. We need to be able to have those those open and honest conversations. As Brian mentioned earlier, there's the transparency piece. What the board does has to be public-facing. And that's really important to make sure that we're maintaining that because that ultimately is part of our communication and cooperation with with everybody in in the community. You know, and the the other piece that I I want to point out is when we think about the community, we're talking about, you know, the students, we're talking about the families, we're talking about the teachers, the staff, you know, everybody that's that Oyster River kind of touches. So it's important that we're providing our communication methods in different ways. You know, not everybody receives information in the same way or prefers to receive it in the same way. So just kind of making sure that we're thinking about that and providing different levels of communication and transparency in in different modes and methods. And the other piece is in, you know, the the business world and military, military world, all of that. Having clear, concise communication, being able to work as a team is absolutely vital. And I think it's incumbent upon us as the the board and working with the administration to make sure that we're setting an example for our students so that they, you know, have a good foundation moving forward. There's a lot of school districts out there that don't have a good relationship with their, with the school administration. And and that's, that's not right. It's not setting the example that we want to provide to our students. So that would be my priority.
So when I first saw the the question sent around, I was thinking in terms of my own actions on, if I were on the school board and thinking of how I would generally approach communication within there. My general approach is usually, or is to listen, seek consensus as best you can, lay out whatever the options are, but listen and lay out the options. If you can't make it consensus, then ultimately some decision has to be made. Once that decision is made, everybody needs to rally up as a team and move forward and communicate that clear and concisely. Just the general approach. One important area of that is that I I always feel it's important to stay open to the fact that I may be wrong. It's happened more than once and be willing to admit that and come straight out and say it as part of the communication. I think that helps with cooperation if everyone knows that you can be wrong and everybody on there. Thinking further now, as you guys are answering the questions about the sort of the broader community aspect in the communication there, I actually found out in researching some of the questions that come out through the surveys, the school board policy list is extremely well communicated. If you go through there onto the website, you can find just about any policy, read it, and it's it's all there. The Oyster River School District's layout of their website was extremely helpful and starting to learn about what the role of a school board member is and the plans of the 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 community and the the school district. So, you know, utilizing that that technology for that communication. Social media is obviously another area to get out messages as as needed. And just, but it's clear from, so the attendance of this, the attendance of the the board, the budget meeting that was the other day, the general community, that additional communications probably would be warranted to get a little bit larger attendance. I have a feeling there is more people in the community who are interested in the the school district than are showing up at these meetings.
Communication's a challenge at all levels, whether it's communicating with your kids, communicating with your spouse, communicating with your coworkers. And we realized that as a board, actually before COVID, we actually had a, we were planning on doing a a survey and utilizing that information to redo our communication plan. And then COVID hit and everything got put on hold. We've since done a survey that recently came out. We've hired a communications director. We actually had a committee a couple of years ago that actually developed our communications plan. A communications director actually is, is actually now speaking across the country about how we've changed our communication that we've done. Everybody communicates on a different level. What I mean by that is some people are on Facebook, some people want an email, some people want to text, some people don't have a smartphone at all. Some people don't have internet. So how do you communicate with them? And that's a challenge because everyone has a different, that different way of receiving information. We've done a really good job, I think, moving that forward. It's never going to be perfect, unfortunately, because you're always going to have someone that will not get the message that goes out. We try to keep, we've actually put a new app in amongst other things to make sure information gets out there quicker. And I think it's been pretty successful so far. As far as cooperation, I don't think you can be on a a group of any kind without being able to cooperate with the people that you're on the board with. And you don't have to necessarily agree. Because I don't think it's good if everyone agrees all the time. I think you have to have a differing point of view. Otherwise, it never gets discussed and you just kind of go down the same path and you never, you never make any turns. But there are plenty of times where I was outvoted on the board, but I support the decision of the board. And even though I didn't agree with it at the time, I support it because we're a unified board. And I think we need to support our staff and support our students in that way by being together. We don't, you know, point fingers at each other, we don't yell and scream at each other, we don't do anything like that because that's just, you never, you never get anything done and you don't operate effectively. So I think one thing this board has been excellent with lately is communication and cooperation because we make it a point to summarize our meetings and put them out in different modes of of communication, whether that be the, you know, the Friday notes for Durham, the Lee E. Cryer. I don't think Mat Berry has anything like that, so that's going to be a little more difficult. But I think that's important because you need to know, whether you have kids in our district or not, what's going on in the school district, since we are the biggest share of your taxes. And that really is is what it comes down to.
Thank you. Can you repeat the question?
Yeah.
Because I apparently never got the questions emailed to me. So by the time it gets down here, I just want to make sure I'm answering it, I'm answering the correct question.
Yeah, of course. So the question was, how will you prioritize communication and cooperation in your role as a school board member?
Well, I just think it's important to prioritize communication and cooperation as a school board member. And there are certain ways in which school board members can and cannot communicate with the public, which are are in the bylaws. But the first thing would be working with the school board because we would be on a team. So would there be team-building activities that we would do together as a school board? Setting our goals together and prioritizing what our goals are for the following school year? We would do that work. And I think from that, we could discuss sort of how is best for us to communicate. The school board does communicate and run their meetings in public. And then there's often determination on how or how many ways and which ways do we want to share those pieces. And there's social media, there's emails, there's Parents Square. I mean, there's a variety of ways and those are just conversations we have. Just the priority is just to communicate because we have to be selling our schools and promoting the great work that our schools are doing on a regular basis so that people who don't have students in in the schools still support the public schools and understand the value that it brings to their community. Also, there's coordination with the new superintendent and how does he want to communicate with the school board? Does he want to update us weekly? Does he want to send us memos every couple of weeks? Does he, or weekly? Does he, or weekly, does he just want to do the superintendent report? And then how do we communicate with him? Sometimes school board members have questions or information they want from the leadership team. And we can email and ask for more information or details on that. My SAU, Thursday afternoons, I have office hours from one to four for school board members to schedule a meeting with me 30 minutes at a time. We can really talk about anything that they want. So that's one way to have a face-to-face conversation. As a school board member, I would just be available personally in the public. Again, I have six kids, you'll see me around the community. An available and approach, I think it's important to get the feedback from the stakeholders, which is the citizens and the parents and the voters. So getting that feedback and bringing it back to the board in a public meeting. Again, looking at survey data, information at public meetings and sort of discussing that in public is another way for us to continue the communication and keep the communication loop going with the community and with the leadership team.
Awesome. So our next question is specifically about some feedback we've been given from LGBTQ plus students about a lack of gender neutral bathrooms at the high school. And what ideas you have specifically about addressing that issue as well as other ideas you have about supporting LGBTQ plus students in our community.
For the bathroom issue, first of all, shout out to whoever designed the middle school. Cause wow, every single bathroom over there is a single use bathroom. And I would love to see that here in the high school. The easy answer is knock down some walls and build some bathrooms. Unfortunately, everything that Brian has been saying is I don't think that's, I don't want to say unrealistic, but there's a lot more to it than let's, hey, bring a wrecking ball in and just knock down some walls and build some single use bathrooms. I know the policy for transgender, non-binary, also shout out to whoever wrote those policies. Those are the, some of the best policies I have ever seen is the LGBTQIA inclusion policies here for the school district. I have looked at other school districts, because like everyone else said, we specifically moved here, not only for the education, but because again, I do have LGBTQIA children. And we wanted to make sure that they would be welcomed and included in whichever school district we settled down in. Another answer, or what the policy kind of already states is make every bathroom that is single use available. Again, it's not necessarily the best, there might be limited. I'm not familiar with the school, I'll be honest, I'm more familiar with the middle school and elementary school. How many current single use bathrooms there are, whether they're for teachers only or like near the nurse's office, things like that. But making those available to anyone who feels more comfortable using a single use bathroom. As far as just being creative, there are other ways you can do it. Part of that too, would talk to those people, those students and what do they want? You could in theory, you know, rent a, I don't want to say like a porta potty, but like a building that we could have somewhere, like a little portable unit that people could use. But do the students want that? Would they feel comfortable having to go outside or go use a special bathroom? And if they don't want that, then okay, we won't do that, you know? So there's a lot of ideas we could come up with, but a lot of that also comes down to what does the students who are identifying as non-binary, transgender, that don't feel comfortable in those bathrooms want? So that would come from a lot of it. And then what was the second part of that?
Just any other ideas you have about supporting LGBTQ plus students in our community?
Like I said, the policies we currently have are absolutely great. I know there's a lot of clubs. Again, my son's at the middle school currently, but he's in a lot of LGBTQIA clubs there. So I don't know what more there is to change. This is one of the best school districts for LGBTQI issues, but anything that came up, I would obviously support wholeheartedly.
Very much like Stephanie, this is, it's a very valid concern and it's something that has to be a collective effort to figure it out. With the middle school, we were very, very fortunate to be able to have that built right in. In the high school, we've got an existing structure. So how do we, you know, make adjustments for the students? And that collective effort, we want ideas from the students, really thinking about what it is that they're comfortable with. What ideas do they have? They're really, really resourceful. You know, obviously the school staff as well, coming up with ideas. Rachel, the DEIJ coordinator has a really good perspective and can certainly help us. And then seeing if there are external advocacy groups that can kind of help, you know, give us ideas to be able to implement something that is going to be supportive for our students. And, you know, making sure that as a board, we're evaluating that information and making sure that where we can, you know, support that through appropriate funding. Whether that's through grants or freeing up monies where possible or directing it towards that. A lot of that, you know, takes planning and process. So in terms of other supports for the students, the policies and such, the Jedi Club at the high school. But really I would want to know, what else do the students want? Are there other ways that they are aware of supports that would be helpful to them? Are there resources that we can bring in or programs that we can implement that would kind of support them and their, and their choices? And, you know, that's just one, one area as well.
So this would be one of those areas that I would certainly want to educate myself on, listen to the community and understand what those needs and desires are. Understand that my first thought with the bathrooms as well was we'll build more or certainly go find, certainly audit what we have and see if any can be converted into gender neutral bathrooms. So we'd start off with an audit and a proposal of what to change there and get the, get the feedback based on that. For supporting other measures, I think the key is just for us to listen, hear the concerns that exist and what can be done about them. We want to empower that community to sort of drive the solutions as best as they are able to. But setting, providing the opportunity to have that expression and that education and lead that education and expression, I think is important. Rather than trying to necessarily, from being sort of outside of that community, trying to prescribe anything. The important thing would be to establish a safe space and allow the community to lead and empower them to provide their suggestions and then support it from there.
One great thing from being on the board for a while is that we were the first district to approve a LGBTQ plus policy in the state, in the entire state. That was huge for us and actually a lot of schools took our policy as a template for what they were doing. And we utilized that policy when we were designing the middle school. As was mentioned earlier, you know, we have all single stall, every single bathroom in there is single stall. We can do that when you're building a building. An existing building like this that is older, it's a little more difficult. So I know what they've done is they've basically taken the faculty's single stall bathrooms and turned them into, into gender neutral bathrooms that everybody can use. But the other issue is, you know, you, we all have, they call them gang style bathrooms, which they have now, is probably what we grew up with in school. And that's where a lot of bullying actually happens, is in those bathrooms. Because it's out of the eye, there's no cameras in there. It's out of the eye of administrators, teachers. And by getting rid of the gang style bathrooms and turning them into single use stalls, you can eliminate 90% of that. And the, but the biggest hurdle for that is it is extremely expensive. Anytime you're getting into moving plumbing and things like that. And a, a single stall bathroom is actually bigger than what a stall is in a gang style bathroom. So there are challenges in that and I really would like to see in our capital improvement plan, probably have a plan to somehow move our current gang style bathrooms into all single stall. You know, and we thought at the middle school that we have a shortage of bathrooms because they're all single stall. We didn't have a, we had enough to make code, but we didn't feel that would be enough and come to find out there are plenty. And we never had any issues. There are other issues that go along with that with middle schoolers, but we don't have enough time tonight to dwell on that. But, you know, we're on a good path here at this district when it comes to them. And we're, there's a lot of support for them at the high school. Principal, Principal Noe has been excellent with any students that have issues to sit down with them and kind of give some ideas and solutions to issues that they have. I think that should continue and we can move forward from here.
Well, I'm glad to hear that we do have some single stall, gender neutral bathrooms at the high school. We did have this issue in my district and to hear students reporting that they were not eating and drinking at all during the day because they didn't feel like they had a safe bathroom to use. Was eye opening for the administration team and they worked to identify gender neutral bathrooms, bathrooms in the high school. And I would just agree, I think this should be a priority for the Oyster River School District. And we can do it through our capital improvement plan. There's also a question for the building administration and the superintendent to come to the school board and identify a way in which they can make this happen. And how can we support them through resources or policies so that it can get done? Because this is a priority. There's, there's no reason why we couldn't be able to do this over the next few years. It just really, it's, these are students, these are our students. And we want every student that enters our building to feel safe and welcome and included and have a place to go. And no student should not be eating or drinking throughout the day because they don't have a bathroom they feel safe to use. So it would just be a priority the board could put on the superintendent to find a way to make it happen.
All right. So when incidents of hate speech, bullying and prejudice arise, how would you respond in your role as a school board member?
I reviewed the policy that currently exists for this kind of stuff in the district. And again, kind of what Brian was saying before is we have a pretty great district. There's already really great policies in place regarding how to deal with people who, students who are bullying and kind of feel hate speech kind of falls under that. We could always create a separate policy if we needed to, that's more specific to hate speech. But right now I feel it is falling under the bullying thing, which is again, very, pretty broad and pretty good. Really it comes down to just a zero tolerance policy and it won't be tolerated. And yeah, that's all I'm gonna say.
So from the board's perspective, certainly we have a responsibility to make sure that the policy is clear and it's followed and, you know, enacted properly. But the policy only gets us so far. So the really kind of bigger piece is making sure that we're working with Rachel and other student groups to make sure that, and the school administration and teachers as well. To make sure that we're building programs that are providing information to students about this. We need to be able to help them and educate them. You know, in, in some cases, it's very intentional and they know that they're coming at it from a place of harm and hurt. But other times, students don't realize and we need to be able to educate them and help them to understand that, that what they're doing is marginalizing and very hurtful to others. So it's really about, from a board's perspective, providing opportunities for programs and professional development for teachers. That they can more directly support students and really kind of do that foundational work of helping our students to reduce the hate speech and bullying activities.
So as Stephanie was saying, there's no specific hate speech policy that I could see, but it's certainly covered, I would imagine, under the harassment and discrimination policies as written in the bullying policies. And it was pretty clear upon reading through them what the actions are. Within them, it doesn't seem like the school board on a specific incident has a role. Can be corrected unless the superintendent specifically is involved. The superintendent sort of leads that activity response. But Kelly is saying it goes beyond the policy. There's incumbent upon us to make sure that that policy is sufficiently all encompassing. And if additional ones need to be created through the policy committee and approved, then we should certainly be reviewing those, making sure that there are programs to support people and educate people on being inclusive. And understanding what the impacts of, well, of voids can be ultimately and how to respond to them. Lastly, obviously being good role models and standing up and supporting any activity. If we see anything, being able to bring it up and make sure that it is followed up on, I think is just incumbent on any good person who identifies a situation like that.
We have, you know, lately we've experienced some, some hate speech in the high school. It's been very challenging. You know, you can have a zero tolerance policy, a zero tolerance policy can be described a few different ways. First one, obviously it's not included, but you, sometimes you can have all the punishment in the world and it's not necessarily going to solve the problem. I think there's an educational aspect to it where I think people have to understand or learn where that came from. As we're finding out with some of these incidents here at school, there was some lack of historical knowledge of what people were doing. They think of it as art. It's not art, it's hate speech. And they have to understand where that came from. And that comes, and we're an educational institution, we have to educate those children to decide, I mean, to determine where that came from and just let them, so they can learn, it's not appropriate behavior. Zero tolerance also means that we as either other students, as administrators, as teachers or as board members, that, you know, we don't put up with that here. You know, we have to rather be a bystander when something like that happens, we have to be an upstander. We have to say, we have to have another student that's, chances are a student's going to be closer than a, than a teacher or administrator and say, that is not appropriate here at Oyster River. We don't do that here. And we have a lot of students that already do that and I think it's great. I think we need more to be more involved and police ourselves. We've done, it's been a lot of work that's gone into the hate speech that we've decided, that we've experienced this year. And I think we should utilize the education, our advisories, sitting down with students, getting to the root cause. And part of it is rehabilitation. Rehabilitation is, you know, I look at it as a student who may have offended another student or a group of students, needs to sit down with the group of students they offended and find, and experience what they went through. What I mean by that is by speaking to them, how did they feel? How did that make them feel? Cause I guarantee that the students probably didn't look at it from that aspect. At that age, they're usually more about self-preservation and taking care of themselves and not thinking about others. And I think we have to get them to a point where they do think about others and how it affects them. And the, that is through the education process. Where in, I think our administrators do a great job of getting to the root of that and getting it out to the, to the teachers and the troops and, and sharing that. So we can learn from it. Cause if we don't learn from it, it's just going to keep happening over and over again. And it's a tough conversation. It's an extremely tough conversation. You have to actually, you know, say how it made you feel or what does that hate speech or bullying mean? And we do have policies on that that are, that are followed and we, they follow them pretty strictly.
From a board member's perspective, I think it's really our job to give the message that we don't tolerate hate in SAUs and Oyster River Cooperative School District. I think supporting the superintendent, I know Jim did a great job of sending out those messages, saying we do not condone this behavior. And just like my other members on the stage discussed, there's an educational component and there's a restorative practice component around this, this piece. And you can, you can begin to teach students about celebrating diversity and expose them to a wide range of cultures at a very young age, age appropriately. And Oyster River's started down that path with their work that Rachel's brought into the elementary schools. There's also a component, how we coach up and support our teachers who are on the scenes when this occurs. And what support do they need and how to respond when either a student is reporting this to them or they're witnessing it? And how do they support that student after the fact? And sometimes they're not always ready to talk to the people who did the hate crime or who they feel victimized them. So then how do you support them without doing that? One of the pieces I worked on in my professional thing, on the anti-discrimination task force, was a protocol for how to respond when there is a hate or bigotry or racism incident in your school. And it walks staff through questions they need to ask, ways they need to be thinking about the situation, what areas of support do they need to provide the respondent? And, and it, and then we added a policy, so it wasn't just bullying and it wasn't just heterosexuality harassment. It was really calling it what it was, which was hate or racism. And then how do you walk through it and how do you support that learner and the community that was harmed by the incident? And of course, we always want to rehabilitate and educate the student that did the harm and allow them the opportunity to repair what, what occurred. So that when they leave here, they have a different way of thinking about these pieces.
Alright, so our next question is, as Student Senate, we've been focusing on promoting student mental health. And as a school board member, how would you continue to support and promote student mental health?
Mental health is very important to everyone at every age. Again, you said, how would you support it? Well, I'd support it. We have, again, pretty good policies in place. Uh, I've been working with the counselors at Mastway, my youngest goes there and then the middle school. Uh, they're very attentive, they're very great. The only thing I can think of again without, I'm just not being as aware since I'm not on the school board is do we have enough resources, um, enough school counselors, um, training for the teachers, how to handle situations if a student's having an issue, uh, mental health related? So I can't give any specifics because I'll be honest, I don't know any right now, but other than just, I am very, very much in support of supporting mental health.
So I love this question by the, the Student Senate because it is right at the, the heart of, of everything that, that I was thinking about and, and wanting to come in as part of the, the school board. And I know that um, from a, a school board members, you know, responsibility we would have in making sure that we continue to prioritize the um, support and funding for bringing in um, mental health professionals. It's currently in the, the budget for, for one this year. And Dr. Morse has talked about expanding that so that they can be um, you know, coverage, a broader coverage across, um, across the schools. So as a board member, that would be something that we would want to continue to support. The other piece for it is um, through the efforts of the various student groups um, at the high school and, and middle school and making sure that we're having conversations about it, that we're normalizing it. It's important to have those open conversations about mental health supports. All of us need them at, at some points um, and, and time. And it even comes down to as early as the, the elementary level. If you start having those really great open conversations to start, it becomes the norm for, for students to be able to share when they're struggling. So that it, it hopefully doesn't get to the point where there's um, a referral because of a, a crisis activity. So um, continuing to build those programs that really provide that. There are also a lot of really good programs out there now and different organizations, nonprofit organizations that want to be able to come in and help schools and keep that, that message um, going and keep those conversations really, really open. So pursuing those different organizations as opportunities to come in and to um, talk with our students, do presentations, give them, you know, uh, strategies for being able to work with um, mental health concerns would be something that I would want to promote.
So as a school board member, I think the, obviously as mentioned, the funding is we obviously have a direct impact on, so making sure that we're a advocate for funding those student mental health initiatives. Particularly any, I don't know if there is a fund to which student led initiatives can tap into, but I think that would be of value to, to have. Uh, but certainly beyond that, the associated staff and counselors and other programs that are funded, make sure that those continue to be and are expanded as needed. Be valuable, I think Kelly mentioned it earlier tonight, but making U N H is a great resource. I don't know if there are opportunities for us to reach out and collaborate with them around those types of initiatives. Having peers um, from the university may be helpful as well in some areas. And I'm not, so the, um, one of the things I didn't find on the Oyster River School District immediately, and maybe it is there on their website, but was a sort of a mental health hotline type of quick link. There's a, a lot of resources that are listed out there, but it's sort of a quick place to call. Would be valuable to get communicated if it's not already and I just didn't find it.
I know in my seven years on the board, um, mental health, student mental health has been an absolute priority for, for board members. I know this year we have in the budget another mental health counselor. Two year, I believe it was two years ago, we added one of the high schools and one of the reasons why I did that was the counselors were so busy at the high school with dealing with kids at a regular basis that we didn't have anyone to handle anybody walking in that was in crisis. Students don't always walk around with a neon sign that says they're in crisis. You know, they either self identify or they um, are noticed by a teacher. Teachers are trained very well in this district and had a notice if their student is in crisis. And they know the process to get them help and to, to make sure that they're taken care of. So what we did two years ago with the high school counselor was basically consider it a floater where we had one that was free to handle the walk-ins or be able to go out into the school and actually interact with the students and kind of check in with the ones that they know, you know, may be in crisis or have been in crisis to make sure they're in a good place. That alone has made huge um, headway when it comes to student mental health. Uh, probably one of the best decisions we made, we also hired a, a LADAC, uh, Licensed Alcohol and Drug Counselor. Again, people think since we're a, a wealthy district that we don't have those problems here. We do, they exist, you just don't see it. That has been a huge um, thing for us. And our, even at the, at the younger grades, our, our counselors are phenomenal. They, they are always learning new things, they're always trying to get in and, and meet with the kids and open up their minds and then teach them new things, make them open up a little bit more. But one issue that is becoming popular, uh, I shouldn't say popular, it's becoming uh, popular in a negative way is teacher mental health. No one talks about that. And um, you know, people say, well, COVID's over now. Well, COVID may be over scientifically, but it's not over in education. And the kids, the recovery from COVID is going to be longer than the actual pandemic itself. And what is end up happening is teacher mental health is now being affected. I'm seeing it in my districts uh, more than I've ever seen it in my career. Student behavior has really drastically changed since COVID. Teachers are getting abused more, um, not just verbally, but physically. And yet they still come back every day with a smile on their face. It's, it's amazing. But you can only go so far. So I think one thing we have to prioritize over the next several years is dealing with teacher mental health. And we've been doing that with PD days, um, I know on my particular district. Uh, we utilize PD days to bring in help for the teachers, how they can deal with, with the stresses that they have to deal with. Because, you know, the kids need to be in a classroom and you have to give them that opportunity. But part of that is, comes back on a teacher. And uh, I don't want to underestimate the need for teacher mental health in the future. Uh, something I, I'm seeing myself and I think we really have to deal with because what's gonna end up happening and it's, it's kind of already happening is we're losing teachers. And it's not because they're retiring, it's because they're just getting out of the business. And it's because of these issues that the, the mental health is, you know, they could get paid a lot more to do something else with a lot, with a lot less stress. Um, so we need to, to be aware for that. We need to get more people coming into teaching. That is a challenge right now because of the stresses and the issues that teachers have to deal with. When I was growing up, we had to worry about fire drills. Now we gotta worry about lockdowns. You know, it's stuff we didn't have to deal with when we were growing up. It's, it's scary. And uh, it's very difficult. You know, I have an HR director that I send out to every college and every opportunity they can just to get, find new teachers because they're just not out there. And if we don't get a hold of teacher mental health, that will only get worse. Not that students don't matter because they do, a hundred percent. They are priority one, but don't forget about the teachers. That is the, one of the most important things and you cannot forget about that.
From a school board perspective, um, we could prior, I would definitely support prioritizing the mental health of our students through policy. But also through the budget, budget work and how we can prioritize, um, because there's a finite amount of money. But adding mental health professionals is um, a good way for a school board to support that. I think also talking about the mental health crisis publicly so that parents and voters understand um, what we're talking about. I mean, sixty percent of our students, according to the CDC, have a mental health need that needs to be addressed in the school setting. Sixty percent of our students. A quarter of our students have made a suicide plan. So this is a growing need and it was happening pre-COVID, it was exacerbated by COVID. And so I think educating our community about this need and why this might be such a big priority when it comes to budget season and policies. Another thing I would, couldn't agree more about the staff mental health. If you read any of the social sciences, teachers are now considered, considered first responders equal to ER nurses, police officers, firefighters because of the doses of secondary traumatic stress that they are exposed to every day. And I would phrase it differently than teachers being abused by students. I would, I would phrase it, teachers are um, experiencing students in trauma, in crisis and they are giving, caring people that enter this field and they can't but help but have empathy for these students. What they don't have enough is empathy for themselves and to enter self-care plans. So in my district, I created a tripod system, it, which is a free system that supports teachers and puts them in a group that works on their own self-care to make sure they are healthy. We want our teachers healthy, we want them in front of our students. Um, and we are not going to prevent them being exposed to students' mental health crisis because it's, it's on the rise. So I think from a school board, school board perspective, it's through finance, it's through budget, it's through communicating with the leadership team, knowing that this is a, something that the school board takes really serious and they want to support it and they want to hear more about it. Um, there are student surveys we can give, the middle to high school. The surveys that we got back in our district, we were quite surprised by the number of students that were engaging in cutting. Um, number of students that helpless or basically helpless. And also from a school board perspective, supporting um, this work, this curriculum, this goes back to that MTSSB and how do we support students understanding their own emotions and anxiety and how to take care of themselves at an early age? And there is age appropriate curriculum that Oyster River is already using and exploring that really talks about how do we educate our students so they can understand their feelings? How do they have um, long-term goal planning and orienting? Um, and how do they recognize their own feelings and what strategies do they use? We're already doing that in Oyster River, so I would just continue to support those initiatives that are happening in the elementary schools. And I, I mean, I asked for nine clinical level social workers in my SAU and we, we got it from the school board. And they're, they're out straight, they're busy and they're addressing students' mental health needs and supporting PD and staff for teachers. So it is something that is on school districts now. It is our responsibility, we are their safe place, students come every day. So making sure that the staff has the PD and understanding and that the teachers have enough to take care of themselves and their own self-care plans. And then curriculum and PD starting at a young age, that's that preventative science piece. Thank you.
So that was the last of our Senate prepared questions. So now we'll open it up with the couple of minutes that we have left. We have a microphone set up right here. If any of you have questions that you would like to ask our candidates, make your way on down.
My name's Chris Regan from Lee. Um, and I have a question about, um, it came up, but about the low level of funding from the state. And I know a few weeks ago, there was a presentation, it was kind of an abbreviated one from the um, New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project. I wondered what you all know about it, um, what you feel as a school board. Um, you can help um, promote the efforts of that group um, to try to increase the amount that the state picks up versus the huge dependence on property tax. Thank you.
I don't feel I can give this uh, question a deep answer. I'm not familiar with these um, the group that you were talking about. Um, other than to say that, yes, I'd, I'd love to see more support from the state. Um, and if there's any way we could help get that, then I'd be for it. But I can't speak to specifics because unfortunately I don't know um, those groups, so sorry.
I think one of the ideas that is, is potentially successful is really working with the superintendents um, across all of the, the school districts across the, the state. And if they're able to be a collective voice um, in providing, you know, data and evidence to the Department of Education, it becomes a much more public um, facing issue where uh, they're putting information out there how the change in funding status is directly affecting the, the schools. And it's not just one district voice. So it's really trying to um, maybe have the, the superintendents band together um, in smaller kind of entity groups that are able to really provide that, that larger voice. Just one idea.
I'm also not familiar with the group, uh, necessarily answer particularly educated on that one. Uh, I defer to, to Brian to correct me here, but I think whether we're getting the money from property taxes at the state or federal, ultimately all that money came from taxes in one way or another. Should be advocating for our fair share from the state, um, but being fiscally responsible within the district, I think is the, the first line of defense there.
Like I mentioned earlier, I, as I, you know, I work in Conville, so I'm more than familiar with this lawsuit, probably more than I want to be. Um, I've had conversations with the, the education commissioner up in Concord. I've spoken in front of the State Board of Education, um, amongst other people in regards to funding and how it affects um, individual taxpayers. Uh, the other side of the equation that people don't realize that was actually handed down, it was a different lawsuit, but it was handed down during the Conville lawsuit was um, Rand v. State, which was the SWEPT, which is the statewide education property tax. That was actually ruled to be unconstitutional. And the reason why it was unconstitutional was because it was a statewide tax, but it was collected locally. So it's really not a statewide tax if they're collecting it locally. Uh, that was the way they did, started the donor receiver um, towns back in the day. And it's so convoluted, uh, it takes a lot of education to get people to understand it and how it works and how the funding formula works. I actually go to a class every year um, to bone up, I guess, on the changes of the education funding formula. Mainly because I'm a cooperative school district, as is Oyster River. In order to figure out how much we're actually going to get. And it usually works out to anywhere from seven percent to twenty-five percent of the actual cost of running the district. The rest is borne onto the taxpayers. And uh, I think more people need to know what's going on. I think we need to pressure our legislators to make a change. Cause ultimately that's where the change is going to need to be made, is going to be in the legislative house and the senate. And the reason for that is um, the courts may not have the authority to, you know, well, the argument is the courts don't have the authority to determine that rate, it's really done through the legislative body. And um, we all know how fast a legislative body works and that's, that's the problem. There is a bill that is floating through right now where they're looking to up the per student um, amount from about forty-one hundred to about ten thousand. Uh, the lawsuit actually was around seventy-three hundred and change. Even if we use the lawsuit number, it would give additional funds to the Oyster River School District in the amount of about seven million dollars, which is a huge break to the taxpayers in this district. And that's if they follow the current formula now. Now, my fear is that the legislature will change that, change that formula so it's not going to be as much. You know, where, I, I wish our legislature worked together better to solve this problem, but there's two different sides that are just so far apart, it's very difficult to, to get that done. But um, this is going to be a problem for, for a while. And if it's not fixed, we're gonna hit that tax capacity that I told you about that people are gonna start voting down budgets, it's gonna affect the kids. And I, you know, public education is a very education is a very, very important part of our society. And if we don't support it, there's only, only bad things can happen. Not everyone can go to a private school. I'll admit, I went to a private high school, but I'm a huge supporter of public education. My parents paid full boat for me to go to a private high school. And that's, just because our public high school, the town I grew up in, was not very good. It's actually excellent right now, but that was 40 years ago. So, so I just think it's a problem for the future. I think we do need to educate ourselves. I'd like to probably bring more to the public as far as how it works. I won't consider myself an expert on it, but I'm pretty close because I have to deal with it on a regular basis. You know, if you're into spreadsheets, then I'm your person. Because it takes a long spreadsheet to figure all this out.
I didn't catch the name of the group you mentioned, but I would ditto everything Brian said. The New Hampshire Department of Education has not provided the adequacy funds that school districts should be receiving. And the only way we fix this is through Concord, is state legislation. So every, if you want, I think it's vital for citizens. I wish more citizens were thinking about this when they're upset about their tax bill because in New Hampshire, we fund public education on property tax. And New Hampshire lost the Conville case. And it's really up to the legislators to adequately fund public education, which would provide a greater level of equity across the state of New Hampshire. So I guess I would just say, I totally, with Brian and the other members, like this is, this is an issue that we need to bring to Concord. I work on the New Hampshire, I'm on the New Hampshire Superintendent's Association Legislative Committee, and we talk about it all the time. We write letters. We lobby. We do everything we can to really get the legislative branch to think about this. So we'll see, we'll see where it goes.
I don't have a question. I know it's getting late. I wanted to thank all of the candidates, especially the new folks stepping into service for the first time, with a particular shout out to Stephanie for fielding the first question every time through. I noticed that the candidates are only from Durham and Madbury. I understand there may be the possibility of writing in, I'm sorry, the candidates are from Durham and Lee. For Madbury, there may be the possibility of writing in current school board member Matt Bacon, which would then afford another candidate to be able to be voted in by the school board in current months. So for those watching or listening, do check out the possibility of writing in Matt Bacon from Madbury. Most of all, though, I wanted to thank the Student Senate. Delaney, you are a masterful facilitator from the mental health panel for multiple years to this now. So please pass along the community's thanks to the Senate. And Jaclyn Jensen, of course, as faculty advisor. It's been terrific to have a chance to get to know the candidates and you made it happen this year.
Thank you. And with that, that does bring us to the end of our evening. So I would like to, again, thank all of our candidates for being here and thank all of you for coming out this evening.